Sort of that, a welcome and thank you to whomever turned on recording. So our agenda, we will have first have a welcome from the CGZ's Deputy Director and the Housing Community Development Department and Schnecke. And then we will include an overview of planned uses of HUD program funds, specifically the HUD entitlement program funds for fiscal year 2024, which is June or July 1st, 2023 through June 30, 2024. Will the city will present on the planned use of city funds, then our partners in the county will share on their planned use of county funds. And then we'll open the session for your comments, your questions, your input. So absolutely you can be putting questions or comments in the Q and A box. That is located either at the top or the bottom of your Zoom screen, depending on the configuration of your Zoom setup. We do ask use that Q and A box instead of the chat feature, which helps to make sure that all those questions and comments live in one place and we're able to address them. So again, that's that Q and A box. It's like two kind of texting icons with Q and A beneath. You can put your comments there. Also, when we open up for comment and discussion, you can raise your hand, we'll unmute you. And you can share your comment verbally as well, and that's often the easiest way. But if you don't want to lose your thought, feel free to put into that Q and A box. We are going to hold all questions and comments until the end so that we can get through both presentations and then have an open conversation. Our meeting will be limited to 90 minutes. We may be out earlier. If you experience technical difficulty, you know, first approach always with Zoom, please log out and try logging back in. If that still doesn't work, then you can email Austin Puka, who's here with us today and is running all things tech for the team. So Austin has just put her email address in the chat box for you. So if you need assistance, you can, Austin can respond to that during the session. Also, today's session is being recorded. We will post the recording on the Housing and Community Development website. And we'll email that out to everyone who registered for today's session, whether you attended or didn't. So you can access the recording. With that said, one of the most common questions that shows up anytime we do a meeting is, are these slides going to be shared? So this will be providing our first draft of funding allocations today. We will not be sharing those slides after this session. The reason is, this is really the straw man configuration to have conversations like today's conversation and a series of other meetings to help us determine what that final set of draft allocations will be. Those draft allocations, the final set, will be published by both the city and the county and their draft annual action plans. And so those will be published on our respective websites around the first week of April. So the, while today's slides won't be shared, you will see the today's slides with the results of this conversation and others, where there may be some shifts to these allocations, and that will be publicly available and you'll have another opportunity for comment. So with that, I'd like to turn the session over to Anne Schnecke, one of the Deputy Directors here in the Housing and Community Development Department of the City.
Thank you, Jason. And I just want to reiterate Jason's comment, thanking you all. Thank you, thank you, thank you for being here this morning. I absolutely know everybody is super busy and talking about annual action plans is maybe not the thing people want to be doing at all times. And yet it is super important and really appreciate you taking the time. Also want to thank our partners at Pima County, Anna Huell, you know, incredible having a great partnership with the county. And it's vital that we all worked together to try to best support Tucson and Tucsonans. Some of you know, I've only been in the housing and human services space of years. And I think the thing that has struck me the most is just how many residents, neighborhood groups, community groups, nonprofits, there are working to try to make Tucson a better place and make sure that all Tucsonans have what they need to a healthy, fulfilled life. So with that, I just want to say thank you for participating. Please, please ask questions if you have them. Jason, I know we'll do an incredible job providing an overview and we know that we need your help in, in all of this, communicating what's most important to you, what we missed, what your priorities are. So please do not hesitate to participate, continue to ask questions and continue to bug us from here on out as throughout this process, as we know, it's super important. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Jason.
Thank you so much, Anne. So let me share my screen more time. All right, you should now be able to see a slide that says HUD Community Planning and Development Entitlement Programs. Can one of the panelists confirm that that's visible?
Visible.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, we, the annual action plan is prepared by the city and the county each and submitted to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development is essentially our annual application for HUD entitlement program funding. And so entitlement programs, there are four programs. These are block grant programs, our formulas. And so those include the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is certainly the largest of the four formula grants. In the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG program can fund a wide variety of activities that are really designed to support thriving urban communities. And so look at supporting decent housing and suitable living environments, increasing economic and increase economic opportunity, particularly among low and moderate income people. Then the Home Investment Partnerships Program, which is the second of the, second largest entitlement, really supports affordable housing creation and preservation. That's through a variety of homeowner and rental project types. So we see home investment partnership funding used to support affordable rental housing development or preservation can be used for residential rehabilitation, also for things like down payment assistance for low income homeowners, or low income home buyers, and the development and preservation of affordable ownership units that can be sold in the community. So again, a number of different types of activities that can be conducted under that program. Then the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, which specifically works to address the needs of people experiencing homelessness. In the Emergency Solutions Grant Program really operates as the front door to a homelessness response system. So it can fund activities, including street outreach, emergency shelter, rapid rehousing, homelessness prevention, and then some administrative costs. And lastly, the housing opportunities for persons with AIDS or HOPWA program. And so the HOPWA program, similar to CDBG or HOME, can fund a pretty wide variety of activities. All of those activities are designed to support the health, social service needs and housing stability of people living with HIV or AIDS in their families. And so we'll talk about how both the city and the county intend to use funding through each of these programs through today's presentation. So before we jump into funding allocations, which certainly is the most interesting piece of the conversation for many folks, want to share a little bit of background about our process. So these HUD entitlement programs, as I mentioned, are annual action plans or serves as our annual funding application, as it were. It is part of a much larger planning process. It's a five-year cycle, which begins with our consolidated plan. And so the city and the county, every five years jointly prepare a consolidated plan that lays out the main community and our housing and community development needs that exist in our community and the priorities to address them over the next five years. Then annual action plans, each year are sort of our tactical plans to make progress toward those goals identified in the consolidated plan. So we identify a set of key priorities and goals in our consolidated plan. Long-term sort of projections in terms of number of people impacted. And then on an annual basis, need to put that into tactical strategies. Where our consolidated plan is prepared jointly by the city and the county. The annual action plans, while they are in tandem, and so we work really closely to prepare them so that they complement each other. Each entity is responsible for its own annual action plan. We then, over the course of the year, implement that annual action plan through activities that are undertaken by the city or the county directly. And also through sub-recipient agencies, like many of the organizations that many of today's attendees work or volunteer at. And then, and then on an annual basis, we complete what's called the CAPR or the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. And that CAPR is really our annual report of the impact of these dollars in the local community. So that's this sort of annual cycle that occurs within a larger five-year cycle. And so leading up to the annual action plan each year, we engage in a series of community participation activities to get input into the process. Today's public need tiering being one of those activities. So now we'll start and we're going to talk about the Tucson Pima County Home Consortium is the first, the first of the funding sets. And so the reason that this one's pulled out a little differently than the others. While the city and the county each receives separate CDBG allocations or separate ESG allocations or separate HOPWA funding. We receive home funding as a consortium together. So we've opted to apply together for home funding, the city and the county government. The result of that is that we both receive more funding than we would if we applied separately. So our home consortium is led by the city, but is very much co-administered between the city and the county. And so we'll cover that and then we'll break into a presentation from the city on this city-specific funding and a presentation from the county on their specific funding. So as we look at that home investment partnership program, and as I mentioned, there's sort of a variety of rental housing, homeownership and other housing support activities that are allowable in the home program. There are five key activities plus administration that the city and the county engage in with our home money currently. And so this slide shows the planned use of funding for fiscal year 24 for home funds, as well as our program income and recaptured funds from prior years, which increases our amount available this year by about half a million dollars. So breaks down into those activities. And so the first of those is rental housing development. Generally, how our organization support rental housing development is through gap financing to, to development projects to create affordable housing or to preserve affordable housing. So rehabilitation that extends an affordability period to keep existing affordable units high quality and affordable. And so in rental housing, rental housing development, we have allocated $2.5 million as our initial draft here for this year. Then the next activity is tenant-based rental assistance. And so the city administers tenant-based rental assistance, the county doesn't with their home funds. We each do a couple of things, the others don't. So we do tenant-based rental assistance or TIBRA. And specifically how we use that funding is to provide security deposits and short-term utility, utility deposits for people who are entering, who are coming from homelessness primarily and are entering public housing authority programs. So maybe someone is coming from homelessness to a housing choice voucher or to an emergency housing voucher through the Public Housing Authority. Those HUD programs can't pay the cost of those deposits. So we have this program that pays those for folks who have no income and those deposits would prevent them from being able to access a housing voucher. Then, and there we have just under $300,000 preliminarily allocated for FY24. Then the third activity is down payment assistance, which the city and the county co-administer. So we each generally put allocations of funding into down payment assistance. This year, as I mentioned, because we have program income from prior years, we have about half a million dollars that we're able to allocate to down payment assistance. And this is really direct assistance to low-income home buyers to bring down the cost of their down payment and help, help get them into mortgages that they can afford long-term on affordable housing units. The, then we have a community housing development organization set aside or a CHODO set aside, that's what that stands for. This is a very specific type of nonprofit organization that engages in affordable housing creation. And so for the coming year, we have about $573,000 between the city and the county that is allocated as part of our CHODO set aside. That's a, and that figure is calculated from a formula created by HUD. But then we can choose of the eligible activities for a community housing development organization, which activities will support. In prior years, we've mostly been supporting additional gap financing for rental housing development with these funds. However, with our FY22, or I'm sorry, FY23 funds that we're currently using, as well as our planned use for FY24 funds, we're in, we, our intention is to invest in affordable housing, homeownership development activities. So a few projects that are working to, to create new units for sale to low-income home buyers at below-market prices. Then lastly is residential rehab. So as I mentioned, the city and the county each do some things that the other doesn't. The county manages a residential rehab program through its home funding, which supports the repair and replacement of deteriorated mobile homes to benefit low-income homeowners. And so the county is set aside a little under 100,000, about 81,000 in FY24 funding for residential rehab. And then we have the cost of planning and administration for the grant program, which is of course included. So that is the overview of our planned use of home funds. You'll see in the table, of course, I only cited the totals. But the table here lays out the portion of city funding allocated to each activity, the portion of county funding that's allocated to each activity for your input. So then with that, we'll continue on from home. And I'm now going to take a look at the city's planned uses for Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant and HOPWA funding. And we'll turn it over to the county to do the same. But before we jump into the planned use of city funding, wanted to share a bit of background. You know, we have these activities, of course, but, and I know myself as someone who worked in the nonprofit sector for quite some time locally and would apply to these funding opportunities, they would come up. There's always kind of that question about how does the local government decide what their priorities are going to be or what they're going to fund? And we're doing, we come to these activities, but where did these numbers come from? And so wanted to share a bit of background also about how we got to the place of the, the funding allocations that we were recommending today. And so our planning process really goes back, of course, to the consolidated plan, which was published in 2020, as I mentioned. But then since then, in 2020 and 2021, the city of Tucson engaged in a comprehensive planning process to develop what we refer to as our People, Community and Homes Investment Plan or PCHIP. And so the People, Communities and Homes Investment Plan really is designed to provide a blueprint for how we're working to address social service needs and other needs as they relate to community members, housing and both housing creation, housing preservation, housing, addressing housing segregation, other housing issues, and supporting vibrant communities. So our work to, to invest in communities that may have experienced this investment, our strategies to support neighborhood organizations and coalitions, et cetera. And so that plan really becomes the foundational principle, set of foundational principles and kind of guiding light that we use for each of these funding allocations. And so that plan was really developed through a comprehensive process of stakeholder engagement. So we held a series of five public meetings in addition to, to separate stakeholder meetings, specifically with human services providers and affordable housing stakeholders. We also held a, or facilitated a public survey to get responses just from general public, in addition to those kind of key stakeholders. Managed a participatory budgeting tool where community members were asked to, to directly weigh in on the budgeting of priorities. So not just identifying priorities, but also what piece of the overall funding pie should be going to these priorities. And then use social media engagement as another tool to really get a more diverse group of folks and a more across-generational group of responses to, to those public processes. And so what you see on the right are some of those key priorities. So we see things like health services and homeless services, this kind of top priorities as they relate to people, streets and trees and green infrastructure and community facilities, broadband as key community priorities. And then affordable rental housing, rehab and repair of existing housing, rental assistance and supportive housing types is really kind of being key priorities in homes. And so then what you see hopefully are that these priorities translate forward into the funding recommendations that we're making for y'all. So through that process, we narrowed down five key funding priorities. The first is to address and prevent homelessness. The second is to increase access to healthcare and food security. The third is to, to influence more equitable access for, to opportunities for training, education and housing as pathways out of poverty. The third is strengthening transportation and mobility options across all forms of transit, including public transit, bike, ped infrastructure, accessibility improvements in transportation and mobility and improved roadways. And then access to quality affordable housing, both through that, those creation activities as well as that preservation and improvement activities. So those really became our key funding priorities. For those of you who have applied or looked at our funding opportunities over the last few months that we've released, you'll see these, each of those requests for proposals really comes back to these key five areas. And in our aim in, in providing a more limited scope of the type of services we're funding is to create a more meaningful impact in some key priority areas, which is a bit different than if we think about the, the history of funding and like human services funding in many, in many of, many years in our community and in other communities, where we tried to just fund as many things as possible at small dollar amounts. Our focus is really shifting to trying to make meaningful impacts in key priority areas currently. So then with that, we can take a look at the city's key kind of funding areas. So the first here is the Community Development Block Grant. The Community Development Block Grant, there, there are a large number, there are 98 eligible activities for the Community Development Block Grants. There's a lot that can be done. Certainly, we're not able to do all of those things. The city receives just over $5 million in Community Development Block Grant funding annually. Of that, we've allocated just under 800,000 for human and public services. These are the kind of social services funding that we provide, senior and youth services, homelessness services, education, disability, legal services, domestic abuse, et cetera. And so the city both delivers some of those services directly and also we subaward funds to nonprofit agencies to deliver some, some of these programs. This amount, the 790,000 amount is set by a statutory cap. So HUD says you cannot use more than 15% of your CDBG funding for human or public services. So we put the maximum amount that we can, but we aren't able to go above that. Then our second funding category is decent and affordable housing. And so in there, we generally include our homeowner, like our owner occupied residential rehab program. So the city with many, with a few nonprofit partners manages a residential repair program that provides rehabilitation for low-income homeowners to improve the safety, health, quality of their housing, habitability, et cetera. It also, this also funds accessibility improvements, acquisition and rehabilitation of like affordable rental housing. The city is, is funding an accessory dwelling unit pilot program that would allow low-income homeowner, homeowners that have a, have units on their property that need to be brought up to code, secondary units, like a sleeping quarters and come up to accessory dwelling unit requirements. And then also clearance and demolition if there are sort of slum blight, things like that. Then our community facilities and improvements, this is where we have the majority of our funding for CDBG. And so that includes, you know, we've commonly supported things like shelters for people experiencing homelessness or accessibility improvements to community nonprofit agencies. This also can spark parks and recs, park and rec facilities, neighborhood facilities, things of that nature, fire stations, public housing, et cetera. And then lastly, we have economic development, which is identified as a priority in our consolidated plan. And particularly there, our intention when we wrote the consolidated plan was to support micro enterprise. So like incubator, incubator, business incubator activities for small business, as well as some facade improvements. The consolidated plan was created before the CARES Act funding came in, before the American Rescue Plan funding came in. And so this economic development work that we planned to do through our consolidated plan now is really being, continuing to occur, but it's being done by the city's Office of Equity Initiatives. I'm sorry, the city's Office of Economic Development, but doing so through American Rescue Plan Fund. So we're not using HUD funds for these activities, but they are continuing to proceed. And then lastly, our administrative funding, like that funds the administration of the grant. So now we'll move on to the Emergency Solutions Grant. So the Emergency Solutions Grant, as I mentioned, can fund four key activities, street outreach, emergency shelter, rapid rehousing or homelessness prevention. Emergency Solutions Grant funding can only serve people who are experiencing homelessness or people who are at imminent risk of homelessness in the case of homelessness prevention. So the city had this year intends to allocate about 60% of that funding to emergency shelter activities, including low barrier shelter for individuals and families experiencing homelessness, as well as domestic violence shelter. And then about a third of that funding for rapid rehousing. This is a renewal of an existing program that provides short and medium-term rapid rehousing for people fleeing domestic abuse, as well as a, I'm sorry, so there's funding for people fleeing domestic abuse and the renewal of an existing program that provides rapid rehousing support for families experiencing homelessness. And then our administrative portion of the funding as well. You may be curious. So as I, as you'll see on each of these slides, it says it's a draft and it's subject to change. The, so these numbers could change some. One of the places where we expect that we'll probably be making a change is to street outreach. We'll probably be adding some funding to street outreach and reducing emergency shelter slightly. Originally, we'd not planned to fund street outreach services through the Emergency Solutions Grant Program this year. And instead, we're going to fund that only through CDBG and general fund. Subsequent to our putting these numbers together, many of you may have seen our community recently was awarded a $7.8 million grant that includes several different programs to better address homelessness. One of those is a street outreach program for which the city will have a new match obligation. So we are likely going to put some funding into street outreach here. But we'll see the, and then in terms of homelessness prevention, it may stand out to, to have seen this funding over time. This would be the first time that we've not allocated funding for homelessness prevention and ESG. And so that is not a, the, the intention there is not to shift back from homelessness prevention or to deprioritize that really important work. Instead, we're trying to concentrate that funding in Community Development Block Grant and General Fund, funding opportunities where the program regulations are a bit more flexible. And so that those services can be deployed in a way that better meets households' needs than the ESG regulations sometimes allow. So then last for the city is the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Program or HOPWA. The HOPWA program again can fund a variety of activities. The city chooses to fund three specific activities through the HOPWA program. The first is short-term mortgage, rent, mortgage and utility assistance. That, that short-term rent mortgage and utility assistance is similar to sort of eviction prevention or emergency rent and utility assistance. But it's specifically for people living with HIV or AIDS and their immediate family. Then there's a tenant-based rental assistance program. So this is a program that provides permanent housing for people living with HIV or AIDS through, through a program that is a look-alike to a housing choice voucher. So it looks, feels like a housing choice voucher. It's sort of referred to locally as a HOPWA voucher, but it's truly a tenant-based rental assistance program. So this is permanent housing for people living with HIV and their families. Then funding for supportive services to provide to the individuals who are enrolled in either that tenant-based rental assistance program or that short-term rent, mortgage and utility assistance program. We know that financial assistance is often the primary need, but the supportive services are really needed to help people long-term succeed. And so that supportive service funding to support that. And then the amount of administrative funds that are passed through to the nonprofit organization, which administers HOPWA, as well as the amount of administrative dollars that are held by the city for the administration of the grant. So that covers the city's funding breakdown. We'll now turn over to the county for their funding presentation, then we'll open it up for questions and comments. So that, happy to turn it over to our friends at the county.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate that. Let me bring up our slide deck here.
All right. Technical difficulty squared away and we're good to go. Everybody see that? Okay. Jason, are you guys getting that good on your end?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Get going. So once again, thank you all for taking the time to stay with us. Jason did a great intro, much appreciated. Some of the explanations going into CDBG, ESG, the background on some of those programs, I won't get into that and bore you with it. You know, and much appreciated the city of Tucson hosting this and getting things going for us this morning. But again, as Jason said, as, as we stated previously, if there's any questions after this, please feel free to reach out to any of us. And we'll leave our contact information at the end of this presentation. So very, very briefly, the county CDBG programs is used to improve and revitalize lower income neighborhoods through public services programming, public facilities. And infrastructure improvements as well as housing rehab. HUD determines the annual county as well as the city's allocation based on various factors. And those do a population, income, housing conditions, as well as a few others. The county CDBG ESG process, we first start with our community outreach. We get out into the community starting about September through late October. And we actually have a two phase application. We have a pre-application phase and a full application phase. So during that preapplications phase, it's really, we're just screening for eligibility for the most part. Once we do that eligibility screening, then we release a full application if the agency reaches that threshold criteria. This past year, we released those applications in mid-December. Our preapplications went out in October with that due date of mid-December. We then released the full app and those were due January 31st of this previous year. And again, those will be for funds that will become available this coming October. So again, we do our outreach, we do our community planning application. And again, as Jason touched on, and I won't get into that a whole bunch, but he touched on everything needed to have that relationship back to the. The county city five year consolidated plan. And then he touched on how that, you know, annual action plan is at our go to for every single year. How are we going to accomplish those goals on an annual basis? So I won't jump into boring you on the background on all that, Jason. Thank you. I appreciate you giving the background on the con plan on the purpose of the AAP, much appreciated. On the county side of the house, we prioritize our activities with public service, public facilities and public infrastructure, housing rehab, and then administration. On the public services side of things, we mainly look to fund youth and life skills programs, nonprofit staffing, staffing at food pantries. As well as some funding some community resources programs in our target areas. Additionally.
Can, can I interrupt you a little and ask if you would please advance your slide?
Give me one second.
Yeah, thank you.
Is it advanced on our side? So give me one second, see what's happening here.
There we go. Thank you.
Give me a sec. I think we're having a delay here because on our side we were going, so give me just one, one second.
Your slides have caught up now. They're advanced. Your own CDBG activities.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
We're good? Just to make sure at the good spot, CDBG activities?
Yes, that is what you're on. Thank you.
All right. Who else talking too fast? The slides can't catch up, right? Okay, so some of those other things we do are the public facilities and public infrastructure. And those are the small capital improvements, durable equipment, facility repairs and improvements. So these are, if you think of durable equipment, these aren't your, you know, your everyday refrigerator freezer type deal. These are your walk-in refrigerators, your HVAC for a food bank, things along those lines. In addition to that, we also administer housing rehabilitation problem in-house. As well as contracting with some agencies throughout Pima County to administer those improvements. One thing to, to point out is that all of our county CDBG, as well as some of the ESG funding, it's all focused and unincorporated to Pima County. So all throughout Pima County, we have approximately 19 different target areas. And this is where we focus a lot of these programming and facility funds. So if you think of Ajo, Arivaca, Amado, places like that, this is where we're focusing a lot of our targeted funding on. And with our target areas, that's where 51% of the total population is, is below area median income. So a lot of unincorporated Pima counties, a lot of areas that we focus our programming funds on meet that requirement. 2023, 2024 program year, as I said, we did our outreach September through October. In addition to our outreach, we're going out to the neighborhood association, PTA meetings, things of that sort. We did have two technical assistance sessions, both in October, November. Where we really get into the weeds on what CDBG and ESG programming is, what are eligible activities? And how you go about applying them for the county. So we use an online application system, so we really get into depth and provide that to you on how to use that system, how to register for it. So again, we do that twice a year as well as we release that application. Those are those dates that I reviewed with you all. We will be having this open for public comment, our annual action plan starting March 27th through May 1st. We plan to take these recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, May 2nd, and that is our final public hearing. And then soon after, we will present all of these annual action plans to HUD for review and approval. This past program year, we received 69 applications, totally right around $7.3 million. On the ESG side of the house, we received 12 applications, had a little over half a million dollars. And as you can see, you know, definitely those requests outweigh our estimated. Projective revenue coming in. So there's our anticipated funding this year on the county side of the house. We're looking at receiving $2.6 million. And again, as Jason said, you know, these are draft and they are subject to change. You know, the final recommendation numbers will be coming from other board supervisors. But at this time, this is what we're looking at, our public services, right around 399,000. And as Jason said, there is that 15% cap on this, so that's right at that 15% cap. And again, this is to cover a lot of those youth programs, staffing, nonprofit services, some of those things. On the public facilities, infrastructure side of the house, small capital improvement projects, things of those sorts, facility repairs. We're looking at 743,000. On the home rehab, that's a high priority in the county. And that's one of our most producing programs, I'd have to say, not only in our in-house, but also our nonprofit partners. That are administering programming throughout Pima County. And that's close to a million dollars jointly between our in-house services as well as our nonprofit partners. And then there's our administration to administer programming at a little over half a million.
And Jill, or well, I apologize for interrupting you. The, it looks like the slides are not advancing again, so we've got a few comments in the chat box to see, I don't know if we're able to.
Which slide are you seeing right now?
We are still seeing CDBG activities.
Maybe just try and get some.
And we are very well ahead of time. So if you want to forward that, like by email, I'm happy to screenshot. Oh, no, that did it. So now we're seeing program year 23, 24. You're.
Weird.
Yeah, click at five and it'll take you to, or yeah, click that little button there. And it'll do a full slideshow thing.
We had anticipated funding?
No, we're still on slide four, program year 23, 24.
If you would like to email your, hi Deck, I'm happy to, to share for you and advance your slides.
We may do that.
I can do it on my end too.
Perfect. Thanks everyone for bearing with us. We'll just have a brief little zen moment this morning while, while we get our IT together. And so actually, while we're, we'll field a couple of questions while, while folks are working on that. We can field some of the questions that have come in so far.
That's a great idea. Well, I was running off to email this to you, so bear with us. We're a remedial entity here. And yes, Jason, if you want to take some questions.
No worries at all. We'll, this, we'll handle some of these and that, that takes a little bit of the pressure off. So the first question came from Jamie Forrester. And so the question is, how do you apply for tenant, how do you apply for tenant based rental assistance funds? Is it allocated monthly and who manages those funds? So to, you know, we mentioned, of course, two different types of tenant based rental assistance in our funding. The, there's tenant based rental assistance is funded through the home program. Which is specifically for folks who are going into a housing choice voucher, emergency housing voucher. A public housing authority administered program. And so there is no application process for that funding. When someone is coming from homelessness into one of those programs. The program staff identify that need and then sign them up for the tenant based rental assistance program. People who, the other tenant based rental assistance program that was referenced being through the HOPWA program. On the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS. To that program, if someone is eligible. So one or more members of the household are living with HIV and they're in need of housing assistance.
I have the slides up.
Through the Southern Arizona Aid Foundation.
I'm frozen.
And then it looks like where we've got our slides back up with the county. So we will answer the other questions toward the end. Oh, and I saw a follow up to that real quick, which is, does it provide move in assistance for EHV? So are EHV being emergency housing vouchers? So it can provide security deposits for someone moving into an emergency housing voucher if they've been identified as in need of that through the public housing authority. And if you, if there are other specific questions there about that, kind of how to access the program. We'll include our contact information at the end of the presentation, absolutely reach out to one of us and we can talk about any of those kind of individual questions. So with that, we will jump back over to the county's presentation. We'll, we'll, and we'll take the rest of the questions in the Q and A at the end.
Perfect. Thank you, Jason. And sorry about that all. Gotta love technology. Can you go to place his live fire?
That one?
Yes, thank you. Perfect. So this is right where we left off. You know, mentioning how we focus a lot of our areas, you know, on our target areas and how our breakdown is. And as with the city said, you know, the, the majority of our funding, we for the most part, other than internal home rehabilitation program and planning administration. The majority of our funding is sub awarded to agencies to administer programs and projects throughout Pima County. Next slide please. And our Emergency Solutions Grant Program and Yvette Gonzalez, our program manager, Yvette, are you on the line?
She is here. We don't have her set up as a panel, so let me unlock Yvette so she can speak. All right, Yvette, you should be able to unmute.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Um, I had no idea that this was like going out on a panel like this. So sorry. So bear with me. Let me join this here. Okay, I'm back on. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Um, I wasn't fully prepared, but okay, bear with me guys. Emergency Solutions Grant, so we do offer, you know, the Emergency Solutions Grant, which is. Street outreach, emergency shelter, homeless prevention, rapid rehousing. And some administrative costs, which the county, the county only uses. You know, this program, we brought in the emergency shelter and homeless prevention activities. We try and get our rural areas involved in that. You know, as well. We like to emphasize case management, housing plans, all that good stuff with clients. Getting them moved on into permanent housing and that is for emergency shelters. Helping people quickly, which is always a good thing and what the community is seeking for. Support and coordinating, collecting data, all that good stuff. Next slide. Okay, so I'm not going to really go through all of these. I think Jason kind of touched base on these. Apologies, Jason, everybody's just referring back to you, but yeah, all that good stuff is in there, what it means. Who's eligible for those programs and what participants are eligible for each of those programs. So that slide will be available if needed. So street outreach, I'm not sure about the funding, Hoel, and what we're anticipating here. So it looks like.
No problem. I can jump right in. For the most part, these are the drafts that are out there in the ESG anticipated funding. Waiting on finalizing those. And as you can see here, on the county side of the house, this year there'll be emergency shelters as well as prevention and administration. So again, these are draft and these are subject to change once we do some final committee review on those.
Thank you, and I'll let them continue here. If you guys have questions, let me know. Sorry, it wasn't much help.
Okay, thank you, Yvette. And then we have Marcos, our housing program manager.
Good morning, everybody. So as Jason had mentioned, Home Investment Partnership Program focuses on. Preservation and creation of affordable rental housing and homeownership housing. And of course, we work in partnership with the city of Tucson as a home funding consortium. We are jointly funding down payment assistance program for low income home buyers. And working with local HUD certified housing counseling agencies to assist the home buyers. We also provide gap funding for affordable rental and homeownership development and preservation projects. Some examples, we have noted here, recently completed a former hotel conversion. Center of Hope Apartments was done by LaFrode Partners. And then we've also funded homeownership infill development through Habitat for Humanity. They're currently working on 11 used single family homes in the Honey Heights neighborhood. And as mentioned previously, our mobile home replacement program. We work with recycled units donated by the Pima County Flood Control District. And we are able to do about one to two replacement homes for the. Applicants that are applying for our home repair program that may have a mobile home that is beyond the scope of our home repair program. So that's a kind of a, the focus of our home funds on the county side. The, the, this slide is just noting that we, we also partner with the city of Tucson with the Housing Choice Voucher Program. The city administers those vouchers on the county's behalf. And, and so we work closely with the city on directing those vouchers, especially the project based vouchers. That we are converting to local development projects. And I think we are at the end of our portion here. On the county side.
Yes, we are. Thank you, Marcos. And there's some important dates on there. You know, there will be a Spanish language public hearing tomorrow as well. Our public comment as reference on other slides will be March 27th through May 1st. Our draft annual action plan, we will put a link in the chat. Our draft annual action plan, we will put a link in the chat. See, and make it on this one. And then again, our final public hearing is May 2nd at 2:00, at 9:00 AM. That's around enough time on there. So it might be second, 9:00 AM. Board of Supervisors hearing, room 130 West Conference.
Thank you so much, county team. We'll go ahead and take over the screen share now. And we are at the part of the presentation where we can be a bit more interactive. So give me just one second here. All right. So this is the opportunity for questions about this content, also for comments, recommendations. If you think what we're doing, what we're proposing sounds great, let us know. If you think we've got it wrong, let us know. Really, this is meant to be an inclusive community process. So some requests here. First, an FYI to make sure everyone understands, so because this is a public hearing, all public comments received are recorded by the name of the person who provided the comment, as well as the, their organizational affiliation. And those have to be included in our annual action plan. So to know that your, your comments will be quoted in the annual action plan, which is consistent with HUD requirements. So to that, as we, you know, we'd ask that you raise your hand and we'll call on you in to provide your comment. And so to please begin with your name and the organization you represent, or letting us know you're a community member and do not represent an organization. If you begin with your comment, don't have those things, we will cut you off and ask for that information. We do have to have it. So please be conscientious of that. And then we also know not everyone is comfortable even in the Q and A box or in, or on a Zoom call with 50 people to share your input. So we will be sending, we'll be providing a link in the chat box to a brief survey where you can put your comments. It will also be emailing that to everyone who registered for today's session, whether they attended or not, so that you can provide your comments through that survey form if you'd like. That survey form will be live until tomorrow at midnight, so like 11:59 PM tomorrow. So you'll need to respond by those comments today or tomorrow so that we can get that prepared for the draft plans that are getting published. So I would encourage everyone to please go ahead, use the raise hand feature if you have questions. I will go ahead and begin with the questions in the Q and A while people are raising their hands. If you put a question in the Q and A, please be sure not to use the anonymous person because again, we have to note who provided a comment and their organizational affiliation. And so please state your name and organizational affiliation with your question or comment. So the first question here comes from Hal Burgsma, maybe Bergsman, I'm not sure, cuts off. I apologize. I'm sure I've just destroyed your last name. The question is, does Marana receive community development block grant funds? So the town of Marana is, for the first time, going to be receiving community development block grant funds this year. They're, they're preparing a separate consolidated plan. It would be managing their own process, which is separate from this, but I do believe there are some folks, I know there was a possibility, some folks from Marana were going to be on this call. If you are, I'm not seeing names I recognize quickly, but if you are here from Marana and would like to speak to your process, please raise your hand. We are happy to let you share some information. Then a question, will the tenant-based rental assistance amount be enough to cover the need for the year? So in the home program where the, the tenant-based rental assistance will support folks coming into voucher programs from homelessness, it is double the current year's allocation. And much of that is because we expect to be able to allocate less funding next year and the funding can carry forward. The, there has been additional funding that the city has received through some other grant sources to support some of that type of cost. However, the, you know, the, the number of people coming into voucher programs from homelessness varies from year to year. So there's not a perfect way to say this is enough of an allocation. But rather, as we look at the priorities of the home program, that's in line with about doubling what we've done in the past. That question came from Jocelyn Musine with the Southern Arizona VA. The next question, this came from an anonymous attendee. It's a question, not a comment, so that's all good. And it's, it asks if this is where the VI SPADA and the Eels program are funded? My guess is that question probably related to the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. So the, the VI SPADA, which is the Vulnerability Index Service Prioritization and Decision Assistance Tool, this is an assessment that's used to prioritize people experiencing homelessness for limited housing. There's not funding related to that tool. The process of coordinated entry that includes the use of that tool and assessing folks for housing and making those matches is primarily funded through HUD's Continuum of Care Program. So it's a different HUD funding program. And then if someone from Pima County would maybe like to speak to how the Eels, which is the Pima County's Emergency Eviction Legal Services Program, is funded?
Hi, this is Yvette. It is funded through, I don't think that's funds through HUD. So that wouldn't, there is no VS PDA, there's, that is a whole different pot of funding. So that wouldn't pertain to anything that's on this slide here. But I can send out more information if anybody's wanting more information on Eels and how that's working.
Thanks, Yvette. So then our next question comes from Victoria Loomston-Brown. And Victoria asks, how do you know that you need to give money? How do you know what you need to give money to? How do you know that the organization knows what is needed? So we identify the priorities of how we're going to give funding, kind of coming back to those, that P chip planning process at the city that I mentioned. So we both engage in our own sort of system planning work and then met with key community stakeholders, including organizational staff, as well as public, you know, that participatory budgeting process, those activities where community members and people who are impacted by some of these challenges directly weighed into what funding priorities should look like. So that's, that's sort of the approaches the city uses. It is, you know, as much art as science, there, I think there's never a perfect formula. And we know that the available funds don't come anywhere close to the amount of need in our community. So it's unfortunately always about prioritizing on a kind of a fixed pie. And so the same there, I'll turn over to the county for kind of their, how their process for determining priorities.
Thanks, Jason. And it's pretty much right along those lines as well. You know, we look, you all have your P chip that you're referring to. You know, we really fall back to a lot of those, you know, those plans and objectives and priorities that are identified in the consolidated plan. So as we're doing our outreach on an annual basis, we kind of emphasize that in a lot of the target areas we're going to, a lot of the agencies we're speaking with. So again, it's, it's going back and sharing, we're doing our due diligence before we're administering these funds to particular agencies. So as Jason said, he, you know, gets, you know, as an artist and a scientist, you know, what is it exactly? You know, but it's a unique little set of figuring things out at the end. But it's definitely some thought, definitely some prioritization that goes into things.
Thanks so much, Hoel. The next question also comes from Victoria Loomston-Brown. And that asks, can you hire a filmographer to make a documentary on the use of these funds to post on social media and YouTube for upcoming nonprofits, et cetera? So I can say at the city, while we haven't looked at anything like hiring a filmographer, doing, like really doing a full documentary, we are preparing, there's a National Community Development Week occurs every year in April. And so we are preparing a sort of media campaign next month to highlight the impact of particularly the Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Program. And that's going to include some brief videos with some of the projects that have been supported through these funds. But that's, that's kind of been the extent of that for us. And again, turn it over to the county for their response.
I think we're right along those same lines, you know, and how to make that move forward. I mean, we, in the county, we have a communications department, so it's kind of brainstorming on how, you know, the best way to get this out to the community, the biggest kind of out there, you know, not only how to go about using these funds, what they're for, but you know, in real life, what are these funds doing out there in the county, in the community sort of thing? So I believe there's more to come on that.
We also do have a website that we highlight some of our programs as well. Participants or the community can view as well. We have one on Facebook and then we do have one on our county website. Just in general, that says, you know, kind of like a spotlight newsletter, whatnot type of. And I can send out the link for the Facebook, for the post up on there.
Excellent. Thanks so much. And then the next question also comes from Victoria Loomston-Brown. And that is, how are those who need this funding to know about it? So I know I've been fielding first for a while, so I'll turn this one over to the county real quick and then we'll respond after.
Thanks, Jason. Well, for the most part, I covered, you know, we covered that in some, some slides we had on there. Not only do we do, you know, our public notices, you know, the fun stuff on the website, the papers, but we're actually going out there to the communities that, you know, are seeking these funds. We're finding existing, you know, meetings to try and tap into, letting folks know about what CDBG, what ESG programming is and how they can use that towards programming in the particular community. So, you know, we kind of have our route we do every September through November, getting the word out.
Thanks, Hoel. And so very similar process here at the city. So we publish funding opportunities as they're made available through our website, also through our, we maintain a list of nonprofit organizations that provide services as well as affordable housing developers and stakeholders, and distribute through those lists in terms of organizations that may apply for our funding. And then we work with those organizations to promote the programs that are available and delivered by the nonprofit organizations we work with, as well as the, and then we also maintain kind of active outreach through our strategic planning and community engagement team here at the city for the programs that we administer directly at the city, such as our residential repair program, things like that. So then the next question comes from Chris Olson-Garrawell with the Homing Project. And so Chris asked if this funding has already been applied for. So I can answer the city that the, the funding that would be made available to like nonprofit organizations applying for, you know, like to provide a social service through public services, CDBG or ESG or HOPWA. The public facility funding for 2024. Those, we are, we have run our competition for those. We're, we'll be announcing our funding decisions next month. So the, the funding is all applied for at this point at the city. The exception to that being when we look at like home, the rental housing development, like gap financing, we release that application every year. And so we'll be releasing a new application later this fall for home rental housing gap financing funding. And so with the county, I know their process looks similar, but a little different. So Hoel, are.
Yep. You know, echoing what you said, Jason, you know, our funding, we already had our cycle for this, you know, next upcoming year. So yes, for the most part, the funding has been spoken for.
Thank you. Then the next question regarding the home funds for rental housing development, are they targeted to specific population groups? And if so, how is that broken out? So if, Hoel, would you like to manage that first from county and then we'll jump in?
Marcos, you want to handle this one? You still on the line?
Yes. So with regards to our rental development, housing, we have a application process that provides various options for, for scoring, which provides flexibility for, for developers to identify, you know, what their project, what the housing is to, you know, who the housing is targeted to, sorry. And, but we, we kind of like to work with developers and communities to identify the needs, as Hoel mentioned, through working with the local communities. And, and then through an RFP process that was just completed most recently with our recent funding, we partnered with the City of Tucson. And the city issued the RFP late last year. And working with the city, we evaluated the proposals that were submitted. But that's kind of how we've, we've worked, you know, to try and identify the needs and then target the, the housing to those populations. We have supported permanent supportive housing by providing a separate RFP for project-based vouchers. And so those, again, go out through a public selection process to developers who are willing to designate voucher units in their project. And, and then that, you know, provides the opportunity for supportive housing for those most in need. And we, we have combined our project-based vouchers in projects that have utilized our home funding to, you know, to leverage those resources to the greatest extent possible.
Thanks so much, Marcos. And so very similar at the city, we have not, in at least in recent years, have not identified specific target populations within our home rental housing applications. However, we know that many of the, many of the organizations, development organizations that apply for our funding are also applying for low-income housing tax credits. And so what, what we see are often a prioritization toward family housing units and/or housing units for older adults and people with disabilities. So populations that are targeted through the low-income housing tax credit program. We, we tend to see more applications come in for those populations. But we don't specifically target a population other than low, moderate income persons in our affordable housing creation currently. The, then the next question comes from Jamie Forrester, which is, is there anything in the works for low-barrier housing program for people experiencing homelessness? For example, a tent city with bathroom and hand washing stations. I can speak at the city, this has not been an approach that the city has been. You know, as we've looked at various responses to addressing unchilledered homelessness, that kind of concept of a sanctioned encampment or a place where people can sleep outside and they have like access to restrooms and hand washing stations hasn't been a strategy that the city has been prioritizing. They've been looking more at the expansion of shelter and housing beds. And happy to turn that over to the county folks for where you're at with that.
Yvette, I'm not sure if you're aware of anything, but you know, echoing what you said, Jason, I'm not aware of the county taking that approach.
No, no, we're not. As Jason stated, we're looking more into, with the county as well, shelter. You know, we do, we, we are looking a lot into the shelter, housing, all that good stuff. So no.
Thank you. And then we have a question from an anonymous attendee. I mean, it's not a comment, just a question, something like, so we can take it as a question, which is, who creates the applications? Will you be taking input into the applications? Last round city applications required a significant amount of staff time to complete. And there was a lot of repetition on information requested. For the amount of funding and compared to other funding sources, the application was large compared to the amount of funds being awarded. So the, at the city, the application packages are created in the Housing and Community Development Department. So our teams prepare those applications based on federal program requirements. The, we will be putting a survey out to organizations that applied for our funding, as well as to other stakeholders in the process. So our review panel members, others to, for input into our next funding round. So there will be an opportunity to provide that type of input and feedback to your experience this year for the city process. And I'll turn it over to someone from the county for, for their process.
Thanks, Jason. And yeah, on the county side of the house, we're right along those same lines. We in-house, we create the, the application. Again, it's based on a lot of the, the federal kind of standards and priorities that they're looking for. And that's how our, our kind of application is created to make sure we're getting the most information and not, you know, really seeking information that's not required or that's not needed.
Thank you. And then we have one final question from Victoria Loomston-Brown, which asks, how can I learn about development and learn to copyright and consultation for developers of housing? Oh, sorry, it says for the city. So I actually don't have an answer to this question. And I don't know that we're able to make that kind of a recommendation, but I don't know if there's something that the county may.
No, I don't have anything like that.
This is Marcos. He's my, you know, I'll just say that the, the developers of affordable housing will typically seek consultants that have worked in the industry and. uh, will typically seek consultants that have worked in the industry and, um, either on the finance side or development side, or typically both. And, and, you know, those consultants, um, you know, have worked in the industry for many years. And so typically, um, you know, there's a lot of referral that happens between the developers. And, um, you know, a lot of it is, a lot of developers look at, um, projects that are being successfully funded and, um, you know, try and initiate conversations with those. Um, I think that's typically what the state is recommending. You know, so, and, and it's a complicated process. Um, you know, and I, I don't know that there's one specific source for training. There are various, uh, development organizations nationwide that offer training like Neighbor Works America and the National Development Corporation, N D C, are, are probably the two most utilized and sought out by consultants and developers. Um, and you can find information on the, uh, on the website. Um, you know, just Googling both those organizations. Again, that's National Development Council and Neighbor Works America.
Thank you. All right. So we'll continue on to the next question, which comes from Nicola Hartman with Sister Jose Women's Center. Um, and so Nicola asks, along the same lines, are there any plans to provide housing or emergency shelter for older adults, many of whom require outlets to plug in oxygen, scooters, CPAP machines, et cetera? No shelter seems willing to accept guests who are medically fragile. We don't have medical services, but are seeing more and more arnhouse women who need medical services. Um, so I know at the city, we've been having a very similar conversation, Nicola, about this, um, this gap in the community housing, um, or community shelter sort of continuum, um, in recognizing the need to identify, um, identify shelter solutions for medically fragile folks, both older adults and other folks with med, um, with medical challenges. Um, but at this time, I'm not, uh, aware of a specific strategy or, um, or organization that is, um, moving toward working in that space. Um, so, um, I would open it up to anyone else from the city or county who may know other things, but.
On the county side, no, no, we're not, we're not working on anything like that, but very good point. That is something we, we could be looking into in the future, but currently, no.
All right. And then we have one last question, which comes from Hal Burgsma. Uh, and it's, if an applicant wants funding for housing for older adults, are there accessibility requirements? So with any HUD-funded program, there are going to be accessibility requirements, any, um, any, um, housing shelter services, the same with social services centers, um, any, any of those facilities that are ad assisted are going to need to meet, um, ADA standards. Um, I don't know if there's additional information that any others would like to add there. Okay, if not, then we want to thank everyone for participating in this conversation, for sharing your input. Again, um, survey responses, uh, the survey has been shared in the chat link. Or the survey link has been shared in the chat. We'll be accepting, um, survey responses for additional input and feedback, um, through 11:59 PM tomorrow night. Um, and then this is really one of many opportunities to provide public input. Um, so the next, as Hoel mentioned, is that the Spanish language public meetings hearing is tomorrow. So we have another session like this session. We'll be covering the same content, but in Spanish, um, is tomorrow from March 7th, or tomorrow, March 17th at 10:00 AM. Um, uh, I know the team at the county shared their public comment, uh, period when their draft, uh, is going to be posted. At the city, uh, we will be posting our draft annual action plan, um, on the H C D website, Housing Community Development Department website, uh, on April 5th, and it will be published from April 5th to May 5th, during which time we'll also be accepting applicant, um, we'll be accepting public comments by email in response to that draft plan. Uh, and then there are two additional public hearings, one for Pima County, one for the city. Um, so as, uh, Marcos and Hoel mentioned, the Pima County will be holding their public hearing, May 2nd at 9:00 AM. Um, and that's, uh, at 1:30 West Congress. And then, and, um, the, for the city of Tucson, our meeting will be held with mayor and council on May 9th at 5:30 PM. Um, and that is located at 255 West Alameda Street. Um, so those are additional opportunities to share your input to this process. Um, and with that, I want to thank everyone again for joining us today. Um, and I wish you a really wonderful Thursday and, um, a great weekend.